Welcome, everybody. Did everyone sign up to speak? Who wanted to speak? We have a lot of new faces here tonight. Welcome. Notice is hereby given pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Government Code, Chapter 551, that the City of Smithville will conduct a council meeting and public hearing on November 10, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall located 317 Main Street, Smithville, Texas. I call the meeting to order. Councilman Meek, will you lead us in the invocation?
Please, please bow your heads. Lord, thank you so much for holiday times and the wonder and excitement that they engender in all our hearts. We thank you for the many blessings we gain from these important times of holiday fun and family reunion. May our hearts be filled with joy and gratitude as we remember the wonder of your birth. May this season remind us the depth of your love and may we extend that love to others. For those missing loved ones, we ask for your comfort and peace to surround them. For those feeling alone, remind them that you are near, closer than a friend. Please protect us throughout the holiday season and prepare our hearts for what's to come in the new year. Amen.
All right. I'd like to introduce our intern city manager. This is Jeremy Fraser. He is in his first city council meeting here tonight and we welcome him and we ask him if he need to Texas. And he says, no, I'm from Oklahoma. That's all I got. I had a better joke, but it didn't quite come out right. So I guess we'll just go to the agenda.
I'm working on it.
All right. Proclamation for a day of Thanksgiving. Councilman Jameson, will you lead us?
Yes, ma'am. Whereas our forefathers established a day of Thanksgiving, a special day set aside to acknowledge their blessings. And whereas it has become traditional for the people of the United States to celebrate a day of Thanksgiving is a way of reflecting on their many blessings and giving thanks for all they have been given. And whereas the people of this country, and more specifically, the people of Smithville are truly blessed with much for which to be thankful. And whereas, as we count our blessings, let us not forget the freedoms we so often take for granted. Freedoms that were hard fought by earlier generations and current servicemen and women who have given their lives so that we might be free. And whereas with these freedoms comes a responsibility. It is up to each of us to find a way to participate in the community by working through the churches, the schools, local service organizations, and the city to help improve the quality of life for those who are less fortunate.
Now therefore, I Sharon Forrester, Mayor of the City of Smithville, do hereby proclaim Thursday, November 30, 2025, as a day of Thanksgiving and urge all citizens to join with the churches of our city to reinforce the ties of family and community and express gratitude for the many blessings we enjoy. Next proclamation is honor our Veterans Day. Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas our community has a continuing sense of gratitude to those who have given so much in the defense of the freedoms which we all continue to enjoy. And whereas the freedoms we enjoy as Americans have been purchased and maintained at a high price throughout our history. And whereas since the establishment of the original 13 states, Americans have been willing to fight and die to preserve their individual rights guaranteed in the United States Constitution and the Bill of Rights. And whereas we owe a great debt to those who have served in defense of this nation. And whereas throughout the generations, their sacrifices have preserved our unique form of government dedicated to human rights and respect for the individual. And whereas so many, for many, the sacrifices have ended in permanent injury or death, yet their spirit remains in the continued preservation of our freedoms and the promise of liberty established as an example for all the oppressed persons of the world. And whereas in honor of these dedicated men and women, we pledge our continued defense of our nation. We pledge our continued defense of our nation so that our sacrifice will stand before the entire world as a tribute to the spirit and determination of a people dedicated to the principles of freedom and democracy.
Now therefore, I Sharon Forrester, Mayor of the City of Smithville, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim November 11th as honor our Veterans Day and urge all citizens to honor our veterans and rededicate themselves to preservation of our liberties under the Constitution.
If there are any veterans out in the audience, would y'all please stand, please?
I know Jose, where Jose, where's Jose?
He probably went to his office. Thank, thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you. Proclamation for National American Indian Heritage Month. Councilman Benham?
Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples. And whereas contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today. And whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical events have been planned.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the City of Smithville, Texas, that the month of November 2025 is hereby recognized as National American Indian Heritage Month and urge all our citizens to observe this month what appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. National American Indian Heritage Month. Will y'all please come forward that we can present this proclamation to you, please? Well, I was going to, I was coming to your meeting and I will bring it then, but please introduce. Will take a picture?
Yes, ma'am.
We gotta have a Facebook.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay. Sorry about that. I just want to get that. Thank you. I appreciate your help. Thank you. Thank you, Sharon. But you're not Indian? No.
Tilda, you are not behaving today. Next item. Recognition of Kate Blusick. Did I say it right? Blusick? I should have that name down. Recognition of Kate Blusick and Tim John from the National Rural Water Association on the EPA grant. Y'all come forward. Come on. Come on. Yes, here you go.
Right there's a microphone, right there.
Yes. Hello. I'm Jacqueline Allblock from Texas Rural Water Association. And so I run the apprenticeship program. So Tim and Kate are a part of that. They put in a lot of hard work. They have to track their OJT, their RTI. And so this is an opportunity to recognize them. There was an EPA grant that went through our National Rural Water Association and Kate and Tim applied. And based on their eligibility, they qualified. And so I was here to recognize their hard work, City of Smithville, for participating in the program. And I have a fake check here because I don't have the actual ones on hand. But can we get a picture with you all? Okay.
At this point, we're going to move item number 15 up on the agenda. Discussion and action on authorizing expenditures from the tax note for Ardnitz 2025-697.
Mayor, council, we're here again revisiting the radio situation. I brought Steve Long from Office of Emergency Management, who oversees the programming and all the technical aspects of the radios. I wanted to update y'all on, I've consulted with the chief in Elgin and the BISD chief. And I think I've come up with a solution that will greatly reduce the cost of the radios. So we're going to try to operate just on the handheld radios and not by the car radios because of the technology has advanced so much that they now work off LTE and Wi-Fi. And we've tested them in the schools. We're currently testing two of them now, which the schools were probably the largest part of our problem was all the dead zones in the schools and stuff like that. So we've tested them extensively over the last couple of weeks and they worked flawlessly. And so we should be able to reduce that bill by about half now. We'll probably revisit in six months to a year and I'll consult with the chief in Elgin and BISD. BISD's been doing it for a while. But Elgin's gonna pilot it like we are. And at about the six month or a year mark, if there's any officer safety concerns or issues that come up, that would necessitate you in the in-car radio, we might have to come revisit. But right now I think it's prudent for us to try this. And so we can go ahead and get the handhelds in or out if y'all will authorize us to do that. So if you have any technical questions for Steve, he's here.
I'm Steve Long with Bastrop County IT. So if y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I mean, I believe I heard from him in explaining my answer right now, but, or my question. But I just wanna make sure there's not gonna be concerns of officer safety or like, let's say that the internet goes out at the school or.
Well, so, so, so the way that the radio works is.
Please speak, sir, if I can hear, thank you.
The, the way that the radio system works is there's a repeater outside of town that the county built years ago.
Rocky Hill, there's a tower on Rocky Hill, that's a subs, simulcast site. It's a simulcast sub-site that we built in twenty fourteen to twenty sixteen. It's twenty sixteen's when we finished it. Uh, and that was built for Smithville, uh, to, to give you full coverage of the city of Smithville. So, um, and actually expanded coverage over into Fayette County. So the, the RF coverage from, from the radio tower site is, is very good. But when you go inside some of the schools, uh, you do have issues, uh, or, and, and other buildings for that matter. So, um, a lot of schools have been installing systems inside the schools, bidirectional amplifiers and, and, and different things because of NFPA requirements. So if you had adopted fire code and that building was in the city limits, obviously it would have to adopt some of those rules and the, the school district has to install those. So, that being said, one of the things that Motorola has come out with recently is a radio that includes the, not only our radio system, but it reverts over to a, a, a system called Smart Connect. So when it loses, gets down to a certain level on the radio signal from the tower, it switches over to, first to Wi-Fi. If it's partitioned wherever that radio's at. And if it doesn't see that, it just switches to LTE to FirstNet. And so the radio, it doesn't do them any good, but they can take that radio and they can be in Washington DC and it works just the same. So.
So, um, from the tax note, since it's gonna be less cost, we'll just leave that money where it is. And in the event, in six months, you say, well, this didn't work out quite as we'd hoped. And then those can then go ahead and be funded, right? Okay.
We need a motion?
Well, I guess to clarify, are you needing money today or six months from now, you're potentially?
No, I mean, it's gonna take a couple of few months to get the radios in, they have to build them to spec and all that, once we order them. I'm asking us to authorize us to order them so they can start being built so that we can get them in. The fifteen mobile handheld units.
Yeah, the fifteen and seventy portable radios.
Um, I wanna make a motion.
Is this the only one?
Do we have any other requests?
Authorizations, just on one?
So I'll make a motion that we authorize, uh, for y'all to go ahead to, uh, start the ball rolling, to get the, the radios that you are needing at this point.
I'll second that emotion.
Motion's been made and second. Councilmember Dunham.
Yes.
Councilmember Meeks.
Yes.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Jameson.
Yes, ma'am.
I know. I'm gonna give them shorter names. Thank you. The motion passes? Is that how we do it now?
Yeah, thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Bye, Stephen. Alright. I think we're back on track. Let me get my stuff up here. Approval of the minutes from October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, council member meeting. October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, special call to meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
Motion been made and second, oh. Councilmember Dunham.
Yes.
Councilmember Meeks. Councilmember Jenkins.
Yes.
Council Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Jameson.
Yes, ma'am.
It's approved. Did anybody sign up to speak?
Nobody signed up to speak under the public comment, but I only have one on item number fourteen.
Okay, will you please remind me? Um, we're gonna hear recommendations from planning and zoning. Are we doing requests for the applications that we have? Hear from the applicant, are you also presenting that? Hear from the applicant agent on all P and Z application requests? Or we can just go, go, why don't you come present?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Caroline Noya, Chairman of the Board right now for Planning and Zoning. Um, we had a meeting last week to do the final plat for the Woodrose Place subdivision. Pretty much, it, we, it was just a final plat because there had been some previous uh, variances granted by a previous council. And basically this was, everything was done. I drove through there, they've got five street lights up, they've got a fire hydrant, they've got a big wide street, nice street. And it looks like all that has to be done now is build houses and build a sidewalk. The sidewalks, it was, one of the variances was to build a sidewalk after the houses are built so that it wouldn't crack the sidewalk during construction. But everything was, it was unanimous, unanimous approval, nobody voted against it. Any questions? Yay. We'd be like, I think that's all I have, yeah, thank you.
Close the public hearing, go back into the open meeting. Oh, and we, we haven't anybody signed up to speak, right? I did ask you that, okay. Discussion and action from the council on a final plat for the Woodrose Place subdivision, property ID one six nine four one, A four six Lumis L acres, two point five oh five, eight seven, eight seven, one eight six two, eight seven, one eight six one, eight seven, one eight six zero, eight seven, one eight five nine, one six five six six, and eight seven, one eight five eight, McMahon Edition lots two, three, four, five, six, seven. Property owners, George McMahon and Two Thirty Properties LLC, Agent Bevco Engineering.
Um, pardon the motion, Jeremy, would you like to, was this not on the phone call that we were talking about earlier?
Yes, um, so Bevco Engineering reached out to me, uh, today to advise me that documentation had been received from Adam Muth, I don't know if I'm saying that correctly, Moith, uh, Moit, excuse me. Um, requesting that we provide them with bonding documentation. I've spoken with the attorney and he is confident that we can go ahead and approve this pending uh, the receipt of those bonding documents. So he has no concerns from a legal perspective. As long as everything is, is correctly stated in the document.
We will do it through a qualification that we will not move forward until all the insurance and other documents are at the city.
You, you would basically move to approve on the condition that.
Okay. Got it. You ready for a motion? Yeah.
Okay, go.
Uh, I make a motion for a final plat for Woodrose Place subdivision, property ID number one six nine four one, A forty-six Lumis, uh, L acres, two point five oh five, eight seven one eight six two, eight seven one eight six one, eight seven one eight six zero, eight seven one eight five nine, one six five six six, and eight seven one eight five eight. McMahon Edition lots two, three, four, five, six, and seven. Property owners, George McMahon and Two Thirty Properties LLC, Agent Bevco Engineering, Tim Sanders. With the amend, addendum that, uh, no construction will be started until all, all the papers are in the, uh, city hall's offices.
Second?
Uh, second at a motion.
A motion has been made and seconded, Councilmember Dunham.
Yes.
Councilmember Meeks.
Yes.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Washington.
Yes.
Councilmember Jameson. Okay, you're good, uh-oh. Thirteen, go ahead, please. Oh. Okay, but we didn't have anybody signed up to speak, but I know it's still.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going back into the public hearing. Public hearing concerning the creation of, of the enclave at Riverbend Public Improvement District pursuant to the provisions of chapter three seventy-two of the Texas Local Government Code. Is there anyone signed up to speak? Okay, so I closed the public hearing on that, go back into the open meeting on number thirteen. And we're on discussion and action on a resolution of the city council of the City of Smithville, Texas, authorizing and creation of enclave at Riverbend Public Improvement District within the corporate limits of the City of Smithville, Texas, in accordance with chapter three seventy-two of the Texas Local Government Code, authorizing the dissolution agreement resolving other matters incident and related to thereof and providing an effective date. Take it away.
Ready for discussion?
I'm ready.
Does the city attorney have a microphone?
Now I do.
Uh, it'll simplify things a lot for me asking you this question. Does approving this tonight include any of the requested exceptions or deviations which we tabled at the last meeting?
So if you're going, yes, so if you're going to, um, approve it, you, and you're going to grant the exceptions, you can grant the exceptions. You can technically grant the exceptions afterwards, but it's usually better if you list the exceptions, um, as you're approving it. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. I think we're gonna have to go exception by exception and discuss. I have, uh, personally, I have an issue with the one regarding the economic development benefit. The others, I do not.
You can technically.
Was that the community benefit fee?
What did I call it? Yes, the community benefit fee, I called it economic benefit, the community.
The, you can basically list all the others en masse to approve, if you're fine with that. And just take out the, the single one you have an issue on and discuss it. But it's up to you if you wanna go exception by exception.
Well, for the benefit of my colleagues, um, I mean, I'll just tell you where I am with this. The, the other, the seven that are included in there, um, are, are okay with me. The one that I've had the problem with is effectively waiving the community benefit fee and, and considering it to be extraordinary benefit. I'm, so I'm willing to approve the other seven, but not that one. That's the one I would like to discuss with everyone and maybe we might have to ask the developer, Mr. McCullough, a couple of questions also, but.
I have a question for Jeremy. I know in the last city council meeting, your first one that you were here for, we had made comments and, and thoughts about these very things. And I know they had expressed interest in reaching out to you, has that occurred?
Uh, at this point, no. I've had multiple discussions about it, but ultimately it comes down to what the council refers to do and what they prefer not to do. Um, so there's really no additional information that I could offer that would make your mind up. It's just a matter of choosing what you want and what you don't want.
So I have one question, this, what we're doing, we are doing the development agreement, is that what this is within the PID?
This is, um, basically authorizing, a resolution authorizing the PID.
Okay, so I, I thought somewhere in here there would be a development agreement where all that would be discussed and delivered.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Andrew Friedman, financial advisor to the city. Um, hopefully I can answer a couple of your questions. Certainly there are, you know, decisions for you all to make. Um, and it's up to you whether they need to be made tonight as part of this PID, uh, creation. Or to go back to Mr. Jenkins' point, a future development agreement. They don't all have to be made at the time of this creation. Um, relative to, you know, whether it's the community benefit fee or any other exceptions, uh, from the PID policy. We talked about that at length at the last meeting. Um, you know, what current market is generally for developments versus what's required by our PID policy. Um, but this is not the development agreement. Uh, this is simply, uh, and I say simply, the creation of the PID because it's the step that you must take in order to create the PID. There are many other steps, um, before you go to levying an assessment or, uh, issuing bonds to repay the developer uh, for, to reimburse them for the infrastructure put in the ground. Um, what this simply allows for is the, really the next step to continue, uh, the adoption negotiation of a development agreement, uh, that outlines specifically what the developers instructing, the terms of the, of the deal, so to speak, are, will be laid out implicitly.
This gets us forward to where we can do the thirty-day public notice and everything else that has to go out? Or has that already been done, was that done?
That is, that is in process.
That is in process.
Yes, sir.
What, did that require a, a public?
That's the public hearing.
Public hearing.
Just now. As part of this creation, this also includes a dissolution resolution, uh, that gives you all, the city, the ability uh, to dissolve the PID if certain parameters aren't met by the developer over the course of time. Uh, namely, if we're not to the point of issuing bonds in three years and they haven't, you know, development hasn't occurred. You all can choose at your discretion to dissolve that PID, so it gives the city an out. That was another, um, dis, point of discussion at the last council meeting that, that, uh, wasn't contemplated, um, in the PID policy itself or the actual kind of legal mechanism that you all have to, to dissolve the PID.
Okay, Todd, could you come up for a moment?
Jennifer, can we get a list of the eight requested exceptions put up? Do we have that?
Well, my sentiments is, uh, I guess what I'm wanting to know, Todd, Todd, is it okay? Is we'll, we'll do this PID without the development stuff yet. We will approve this to move forward and then we will sit down at the next meeting with you. And we will go line by line of the development agreement, how we want, what we want. You can go back and forth with us on that and we'll have that discussion in December.
Certainly.
That works for you.
Certainly. Process typical is that we typically sit down with staff. Happy to do it with the council.
Well, you, sitting down with staff is excellent, but there are, there are sticking points. Uh, we've already seen that there are sticking points, so you're gonna have to finally come to, to council to decide what we're gonna do.
Happy to do that, happy to do that. I, I just know it's, it's, it typically is a, a little bit more of an arduous process. So, so sitting down with staff first is typical, but yeah, happy to do whatever, whatever's necessary.
By doing what we're doing here, the only thing we're doing is establishing the PID without the development agreement. And this allows us to move forward, it also has the dissolution. If we don't make, if the development agreement does not stand, we can dissolve the PID. Am I correct in that? I'm asking you. Yes. Okay, that's, that's, that's good, then I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward.
Yeah, the PID is just an entity. It's just an empty entity and if we never do anything with it, it's, it, it doesn't do anybody any good and it can be dissolved.
I think I.
We never come to terms on anything else, then, then we, we've just created an empty entity, is all we've done.
Before I feel comfortable moving forward, I'm hearing conflicting guidance between our financial advisor and our attorney. Am I correct in unders, it seemed like you feel a lot more comfortable of us not approving it without discussing the exceptions. Versus, I'm hearing from the financial advisor, he doesn't think it's warranted today. And so I'm just trying to understand, am I understanding the conflicting advice or?
No, it's just, it depends on what the council wants to do. You have the option to do various different things. And so, I mean, the national advisor wants to, you know, Mr. Friedman wants to weigh in. You have the, you're, you're creating the PID and you can create it with the exceptions or not create it with the exceptions, that's up to you. This does not include, as he mentioned, the development agreement. And so you're, you're just, you're creating it with the parameters you want, right? And so, um, that's what you're doing now. And so usually the best option is you create it the way you want now and you're not going back and changing anything.
Uh, just to clarify, I'm a simple thought processor. I'm hearing you say that it's, I think you're recommending that if we're going to approve the PID tonight, we need to do it knowing what we wanna do or hold off. I mean, why would we create an empty shell to fill out later? Why would we be going through this process right now?
Not necessarily hold off, just you can do what you, whatever your council wants to do. You can hold off, you can pass it, you can pass it. You can hold off, you can pass it, you can pass it with the exceptions. You can do any of those things. It's not, I'm not basically saying hold off or don't hold off. What I'm saying is you have the option to pick what you want to do.
Councilman Jenkins, are you suggesting that we approve it now and go work on the exceptions later? I'm trying to simplify this.
Well, the sticking point seems to be the, the community want a fee. So all the other ones we talked with, we were all good with. Am I correct in that?
That's my position.
Yeah, that was the position I believe we all made when we talked about this. So let's slip with the exception of the 200,000, which we will address at a, a time when we can sit down with, with Todd and talk about this. Because this is a sticking point. And you have, you're gonna have to decide which way you're gonna go. Because we may not move off of this. So if we can do this with, with everything but that included and that that is unresolved, and I don't know how we'll word this, we're gonna look to you for that one.
But I don't see the purpose of doing that. That's what I'm saying.
I mean, can we?
We consider, let's talk it out tonight. We can ask him any questions we want in terms of, for instance, Mr. McCullough, would you be, if we were to approve seven of the eight, but not approve the one that waives the economic development fee, are you good with that?
You have something you want to say? Okay. I, I really think that just, I hate to not answer the question directly, other than it depends on what's in the development agreement. Because all those things can be addressed in the development agreement. Councilmember. So we, we can address specific items. How much money is going to be allocated for, for a certain thing in, in the development agreement? It's, it's an agreement between us and how, how the property is going to be developed. Look, I, I'm open to helping the city get done with what they'd like to get done as well. I, I can just tell you that much. I'm open to that. I'm not closed off to that. I want to, I want to benefit the city as well. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it.
And I appreciate that and understanding the position that we're in. This is the first one that we've done. And I know that we don't set precedents and we evaluate everything as on a standalone basis. But I am pretty sure that the next developer that comes in is gonna look at how we handled the first one. And I don't know, do you have, you have future plans too that certainly would impact
I do.
the way you might approach them, these decisions that we make.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Sure. Regarding the, the PID creation relative to listing the exemptions, my thought for you all on that is I'm hesitant for you all to go and memorialize within the PID creation itself things that are contemplated and, and memorialized within that development agreement. For instance, you memorialize something tonight of these exceptions, whatever they may be. And then by the time we get to, you know, negotiate the development agreement, there's more conversations that have, and they may differ. Well, now you've got conflict between the PID you've created and the development agreement that you've since struck. And now you're starting that process over potentially. And so that's why, you know, what's, I would advise you all negotiate from one of those documents. The development agreement is the one that you would negotiate those, those exceptions that the developer is looking for, what you all are willing to grant.
I'm just not understanding the logic of approving the PID and then working on the details of it later with the possibility of coming back and dissolving it. I think that's inefficient, in my opinion. I'm really looking forward to my colleagues' comments.
Question for the city attorney. How do we, as council, if we were to follow his advice now of not memorializing our desires of what should be in, as far as the exceptions?
Yes.
How do we effectively communicate a direction of the city manager? These are our preferences while also not memorializing our preferences in the approval?
So you would, basically, you would move to approve the resolution with the exception of the exceptions, or excluding the exceptions? And that takes them out. You can instruct this, because it's all under the same topic. You can have a motion to instruct the city manager to negotiate based on the exceptions. And that is perfectly fine as well. Think of the, the creation of the PID as kind of the outer bound box, right? That, that's the, that's the whole authority and then whatever you work out inside is up to you.
No, I think just, yeah, and I think that if we go that path, it also doesn't require another meeting in another month before we can now have another conversation if we.
Yeah, it, it allows Jeremy to, to negotiate and get most of it down. So when we come to the next meeting, we know where we're sitting.
I'm, I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
I think I would just publicly like to, I, I alluded to it in the last meeting. But I think for, for Mr. McCullough to, to hear my preferences and desires is there is going to be a bridge being built across the river next to 71 on the south side that is connecting Colorado Drive to Riverbend. There is a historical plan for a hike and bike trail. If somehow, whether it is adjacent to the property along the right of way, somehow of being able to at least be able to connect American Legion near the entrance of your property to the trailhead, I think that would be a significant wonder for me.
Do, do you have the exceptions, Jennifer? Can you print it out for me so I can have it?
Let me just address that because I think that's a great example of kind of the, the push-pull here is that you don't want me to, to be left without giving you anything. But I don't want to be double hit. So, you know, I, I agree to the $200,000 and then you say in the development agreement, now we want this and I'm getting double whammied in a way. So that's kind of the push-pull here is, is, I, I understand where you're coming from. You see where I'm coming from and that's where, look, I'm, I'm, I'm open. Not only am I open to, I want to help the city improve some of the things that they have. That's, that's part of the reason of, of, of. Now, there's limitations on what we can use the funds for.
Yeah.
That's, that's my, that's Mr. Friedman and Patrick that can address that better than I can. Because, because those are strictly guideline, your attorney, are strictly guidelines through, through the, through the state's Attorney General's office. So I, I have to be careful on what I can speak to there, other than I, I want to, I want to be a part of, of helping the city.
I, I think that, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm just gonna ask the lawyer and Jennifer a short question. If I just say we approve the PID with, with the exceptions noted from the previous meeting, the seven.
Without the exception.
Hmm?
Without the exception.
Without the exception.
Excluding the exceptions, one through eight.
Yeah, without, without the exceptions.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that works for me.
I, I really like the idea that Councilman Dunham has put forth with tying into what hopefully would be a longer-term development of hike and bike trails and to the bridge that's pending. But in terms of the use of the community benefit fee, I think there's like 13 things that we can spend it on. And I do believe that the hike and bike trail is something that if we chose to spend it on, we could do so. But if not, if we just take the economic benefit fee, then we reserve the ability to decide how that money is spent at a later date, as long as it's one of, I'm gonna say 13 things that are enumerated in the, by the law.
Truthfully, I don't have that memorized.
I looked at it.
So i- if you make a motion to approve the resolution excluding the exemptions one through eight, then that's, that's an issue you address at a later time.
Thank you. And I just love the opportunity for us to come talk about it in front of the public so it's clearly transparent.
Exactly. Yeah. I can do it.
Sorry, can I just ask a question? I, I apologize for interrupting Patrick Born with Sundance Analytics. I just want to make sure I understand what's being proposed. Are you asking to create the district with exceptions?
Without exceptions at this point.
Oh, just create the district. Okay, thank, thank you. Correct. Thank you.
Mayor, I make a motion that we, I'm trying to find my place on here. That we authorize and create enclave at Riverbend Public Improvement District within the corporate limits of the City of Smithfield, Texas, in accordance with Chapter 372 of the Texas Local Government Code, authorizing a dissolution agreement and resolving other matters. No, that is not the full thing.
By resolution.
I didn't, may I offer an amendment here that we make sure that we say without exception?
Because I didn't do it right. There it is. Mayor, I'll make another motion. Make a motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council, the City of Smithfield, authorizing creating enclave at Riverbend Public Improvement District within the corporate limits of the City of Smithfield, Texas, in accordance with Chapter 372 of the Texas Local Government Code, excluding the exceptions listed.
Yes.
I'll second.
We need the dissolution agreement with it.
It's in, it's in the resolution.
Okay, there you go.
You're good.
Second, my second. Your second?
Okay.
Oh, wait.
There are exceptions listed within that. Within the resolution for you all, there are no exceptions listed. I'm, I'm not sure where, I know we've discussed that separately, but those aren't listed within any resolution.
So just to, just to clarify, the resolution and Jennifer, I were just double checking. Does not include the exceptions, but since you started talking about the exceptions, you want to make sure it's very clear what you're adopting, right? And so because of that discussion, you want to expressly exclude those exceptions, making sure it's not misunderstood and the motion isn't misunderstood as to what's technically being adopted. The resolution does not contain them. Your motion is perfectly fine. And it essentially will not change the resolution that's before you. The resolution that's before you does not have the exceptions in it, and so it's perfectly fine.
And I think there.
Attorney, can we, can we then state as written, PID policy created as written instead of? Well, they're, they're adopting the resolution with no changes. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so that, the, the motion does that. Got it. Okay.
And for, I believe our intention is to also vote to authorize in a second vote for the city manager to begin negotiating with you based on the exceptions you've requested.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. Councilman Dunham.
Yes.
Councilman Meeks?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilman Washington?
Yes.
Councilman Jameson?
Yes.
Approved. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I make a second motion on this matter. To, I make a motion to direct the interim city manager to begin negotiations regarding the enclave at Riverbend? Enclave at Riverbend in accordance with the exceptions previously presented to council and the desires expressed tonight by council.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion second, and we have Councilman Dunham.
Yes.
Councilman Meeks?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilman Washington?
Yes.
Councilman Jameson?
Yes.
Jennifer, do you have all that? Yes. Do you want to vote?
Oh. I do vote yes, but.
That's the difference.
It's a little thick, but thank you. Are you good?
I did want to thank the mayor and council.
Oh, thank you. This has been a long time coming, so.
Thank you very much and look forward to working with Mr. Fraser and each of you in, in getting a development agreement together.
Well, we're here to work this out, to get you guys moving and moving forward.
Absolutely.
There you go.
Thank you so much.
Me as well. It's something that I do want to see happen and want to make sure that it is benefits the community. And I think that's where you are as well.
Thank you. Okay. Number 14, discussion and action on a certificate of appropriateness to install a two to three-foot high split rail fence at 100 Main Street owner Sid Millsbaugh.
And I do have a citizen comment on this one.
Welcome. Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Rachel Tolbert. This is my first time here, so it's nice to be putting some faces with some names.
Speak into the microphone. You speak very softly.
I'm a little nervous.
Be nervous.
You guys seem like a nice bunch. I'd like to voice my opinion against the COA for the barricade proposed by Mr. Millsbaugh between 108 and 110 Main Street. It's the alley that's no longer an alley. At the historical commission meeting couple weeks ago, I think it was, Mr. Millsbaugh said he wanted to maintain that, that area as green space and prevent traffic from going on it like has been for the last 50 years. So before a decision is made, I'd like the council to review those plans. Not just the plan for the barricade, but what, what green space does he envision in there? And I ask because I own 110 Main and we're working on getting it opened and restored. It's a beautiful project. But I'm just a little bit unsure about what Mr. Millsbaugh plans to do with that space. You know, currently, it, the problem with it for me is that the proposed barricade combined with an AT&amp;T phone pole that goes diagonally across the back, I can no longer access the back of my building at all. And so we're trying to work with AT&amp;T, but there's already been some problems with trash pickup. And, and there's also a question of public gas lines that I, I don't have an answer on yet. But there's still just a lot of questions that affect me and my business. So I'm asking the, the council to review his plans in a little more detail, see what he has. Right now, it's just a fenced barricade, but I just want to know a little bit more about those plans. You know, there, there were big plans to develop that whole corner on Main, plans that never happened. And I think the city may have lacked a bit of foresight when they sold the alley to Millsbaugh, particularly thinking about how it would affect businesses, neighboring businesses like mine. But the business, the, the development never happened anyways. And so I think, you know, mistakes were made and people say things that they are gonna do, but then they don't do them and all that. For all those reasons, it's kind of like, I think the noble and right thing to do would be to return that parcel of land to the city. That is a radical assumption of decency, but it's caused so many problems for, for me that I really wish that it could be corrected. And if not, at least let's just look at his plans a little more deeply. Because they're kind of right there on Main, the most popular block on Main. And I just really want the decision to be made with care.
Rachel, hi. I, I don't know. Historically, I've only heard bits and pieces of what happened, when it happened, how it happened. I don't know that any of us are clear on it. And if anybody can provide clarification, maybe Jill can, I don't know. But essentially, the alley is no longer, it's owned by Sid. So you're not able to use it, nor are the other business owners along there, correct?
Correct.
And, and does this fence, I, I can't really tell from this sketch. I still am confused. Does this essentially include the alley so that it is, you're not, it's not navigable anymore?
Correct, that, that's his.
And, and is, is the plan to, is that the purpose? Do we know the purpose is so that no one can actually use the alley?
Yes. Right now, he's got a couple of pickup trucks there, which are, you know, on his property, but preventing my work trucks and, you know, the new electrical pole. There was, people looked pretty squished back there when the city was putting in the new electrical pole. Right now, the new traffic layout is that you're headed east through the backs of the, of the buildings. And then it's a 90-degree turn to get out toward of the back of the block. But there's no way to get out the front of the block. And because of the AT&amp;T pole, there's no way for me to get into my building at all, even to use it for parking. So I'm kind of trapped in there with his proposal. If it's a green space and it's pedestrian-friendly, you know, I can walk to the back of my building. I don't have to have my car there. But it, it's just a little bit unclear what he wants to do with that space. The original plan was to. The original plan was to develop that whole corner, but that was almost twenty years ago and just never happened, and so I, I'm, I'm not sure what he means by green space. But that's my question.
So he owns the alley, but the pole is not owned by Sid. That's an AT&T pole, and it should be accessible to business owners if they need to use it. Am, am I understanding that to be the case? Is anybody?
Yes, I, I think so. And another question that I'm trying to figure out is that the gas lines along my side of the building, on my building, Sid has asked them to be removed because they're like technically like hanging over his spot, but that could prevent me from having gas utilities. We're, we're still working that out, but I, I just haven't seen, I think that Sid was going to do a survey and get like the exact measurements and how close up to my building they come so that he can make sure that I don't go onto his side. But for now, just the, this barricade, this fence that he's proposing, it, it just doesn't seem to have much of a purpose, and then in his historical commission discussion, he said a lot about green space, which I think is great, like if he's going to turn it into a park or just make it look pretty, um, yeah, great. But if it's just going to be a barricade and then a dirt road that, to nowhere, you know, then I, I'm kind of just not think that's best for the, the downtown blocks of Smithville, the historical downtown.
Yes, hi.
Speak with them. So the deal with the AT&T pole, it's actually on her property, one ten's property. It's actually inside on the property itself. It's an old pole, bad shape, it's about to come down, but it's dead-ended, which means they bring all their cables there, it's dead-ended, and there's a guy wire that's coming down that she's not having access. She can't get in because it's going right in the middle of her deal. I have contacted every AT&T person I've ever known, and she has, we, we can't get no thing out of it. And it's honestly, I have no way to have my guys transfer the wire and everything because if we, I don't know what's up there, I don't know if it, if we break it, if we tear it, what happens, what goes from there? We don't want to be responsible for it. So we're still in the works of trying to get that pole. We set a new city pole. It is out on the easement and everything, it's, it's easyable access to get to and everything, and we're asking AT&T to remove their stuff and their pole and everything and move it to our pole. Go ahead and attach it to us. They have access in there. Is it cramped? Oh, yeah, it's cramped, because the way the alley is, it's not just a straight alley right through there. You know, it comes in halfway and then nineties and goes back out, you know, towards, I think that's Olive Street.
How are they getting access now? Any access to that alley now is coming?
Any access to that alley has to come off the second street, uh, right next to the coffee house and stuff, and you'll.
And you come down to the end and it's dead-ended or barricaded, whatever we're going to call this.
But now it's.
His property.
Right now, it's barricaded, yes, into his property and everything.
How do you get out?
So you take a left?
Back it up, because you're not turning around.
Well.
You also can't turn the ninety-degree hairpin turn there to get out the back way, so the, the way I saw the trucks do it before was they had to back out one at a time.
Yeah, waste management can no longer navigate that alley, and fire trucks can't either.
So we have to come out by the Mexican food place right there.
That was a concern of mine as well, emergency services, but I didn't hear back from Mr. Jack. I'm just forgetting all many names, the fire marshal, Jack, I think is his name, and I just haven't heard back from him, but I did have an email into him to ask how would a big fire truck navigate back there? I don't really think it was possible, because even the trucks that were there to install the electrical pole were having trouble.
And there's still some problem with the gas lines about?
The gas lines as well.
But who's going to be paying for that and how that's going to be done?
Have not heard about that yet.
Okay.
I, I think that was more of an issue between Mr. Millsbaugh and the public utilities, the gas company, and so I was kind of not involved in those conversations. I'm just holding my breath, you know, biting my nails, because.
Heard part of that conversation, because I, I saw some of this. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to ask the interim city manager's opinion of, because I think we've got too many moving parts here to make a decision on this tonight, and I'm thinking that if we were to direct him to prepare a report on possible solutions to this, because this is multifaceted, and possibly negotiate with Mr. Millsbaugh, whatever those solutions might be, but I certainly cannot approve this tonight.
I'm not willing to approve this.
No.
I think also, to add some context based on what I've heard from conversations with the previous city manager, is the gas line is not a trivial gas line, it is a gas main line, it's a trunk. Um, and it's two inches and it goes across Main Street. It's a very, very significant line that has been in place for roughly a hundred years.
Yeah.
It is not going to be an easy task, and that property may never be developed if the gas line can't be removed.
I'm, I'm not, I, and the way we are tonight, there's no way I can, until I have a lot more information.
Could we ask Mr. Millsbaugh to come up and ask him a couple of questions? Would you mind, sir?
Mr. Millsbaugh?
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
Right there, come on. Just, you can pick it up, you're, you're very tall, so.
My name's Sid Millsbaugh, I've met most, not all of you.
Might have to pick it up.
I've, it's just, hello? Oh, I see what you mean, you know how to get it, okay. Okay, there we go. I've been here in, um, Smithville since two thousand and eight, when I bought that property. There were six lots on it, and two thousand and fifteen, the city decided that we could have the lot next, that we've been talking about, Lot eleven, if you look at the map up there. It has been used as a alley, but it's not an alley. It's part of the city's original plans back in the very early stages of the formation of the city of, of Smithville. All of those lots are zero lot line lots, and it goes from, you can see where it says alley. You go towards First Street, you have two lots, two and a half lots, and then if you come down, everything then faces on First Street. So you have Main Street frontage and you have First Street frontage. Any development that's going to go in there, we'd have to use all of the lots as either parking, because of the parking ordinances that we have, which is onsite parking. So right now, what I'm trying to accomplish is simply to just beautify that lot. If you look at where the chiropractor's lot is, which is across the street from the gym, we have the same kind of fence on that property that I am planning to put on this property. The issue that I think you may be having is that my lot line goes within several inches of your property. You're encroaching on my property, actually eight inches, and we gave a variance on that property when the previous owner had it. So they squeezed a little bit of land out of us, I'm hoping we aren't going to have to have a lot more squeezed out of us. The, um, Lot eleven is a lot, it's always been a lot. It can be built on, and the inset, that, that's what it's called, it's an inset that would have to come in there. So you'd have a wall up against a wall and another wall up against another wall. And it goes all the way back a hundred and twenty-five feet. So, um, I believe your contractor, if you don't mind, Mayor, do you mind if I address her? Your contractor came in and he built a A-frame roof, which is going to shed water. If I come in there and build a, a wall up against your property, on my property, up against your property, which would be about a four or five inch difference, all of your rain is going to come back into your building, and then we have concerns about that, because it's not good for you. I don't know how that got put on. I'm trying to build a fence, it's a really nice, beautiful fence, it's two rails on posts. I had to go to the long name committee to get approval there, which I did, and now I'm before the city council to get approval, which hopefully I'll get. But yet, there are no ardent, I mean, there are no permits issued for your construction that you've had. Your contractor did not go to the city, did not go to the long name committee, did not go through architectural approval. Her contractor came in and put on a roof that is incongruent with all the rest of the roofs, which shed to the back of the alley that comes from Second Street to my property and turns and then goes over to Olive Street. I don't know how that happened.
Question of fact for the city manager, if I may.
Yes, please do, I mean, I'd love some clarification if that's the case.
Like a question of, um, the roof was replacement, you may not know, but I don't know if you do, if you've been briefed on this, but the roof was a replacement of the existing structure, there was no modifications or additions, is that true?
I disagree, I think that.
But again, I did come in on the back end of this, so a lot of that information is probably better known by Doug and, and Public Works Director. So at this point, I, I lack a little bit of historic knowledge on this situation, but I know it's been kind of forced into the forefront, and obviously, we need a resolution of some sort, but I'm not equipped at this point to give you any historical perspective.
Now, I, I am at this point, Sid, I understand what you're trying to do, but until we get all the clarification we need, none of us are going to be willing to vote for this. We, we need a whole lot more, we need a whole lot more information.
I get it, yes, every time I come before the committees, there's always one reason or another why I don't get what I came before the committee for, and really, the roof is actually supposed to slant to the back of the lot, so that the water sheds into the alley, not into what we think is it, or what everybody else thinks is an alley.
Sid, I.
That's the only.
I, I need to get information from city officials and, and everyone else, and we will move forward, but we're not going to do anything until we get the information we need.
Right, and we'll let the city manager.
Do all of that.
Yes.
May I ask him a question? Just, since none of us were here, then Mr. Millsbaugh, can you explain to us how things came about so that you ended up buying the, what was an alley at the time?
It belonged to the, it belonged to the city, is that?
It was a lot, it's never been an alley, it designated as an alley, it's a lot, I mean, anyone could have come in.
So the lot itself, how, because my understanding is there were some performance and non-performance issues involved there that eventually allowed you to be able to purchase that lot? Can you help us understand that?
Um, I think it's a two eighty agreement, I'm not really sure, but.
Three eighty?
Into town and we bought these, oh, I think it was a two eighty agreement, and I'm not really sure if that's correct, if it is correct. When we moved into town and we bought several lots at that time and several buildings, we asked the city to give us some concessions, and the concession was to let me have that lot in between one ten or two ten, whatever it is, and be able to then do some construction on it and actually improve the street and improve the lot and put up something that basically people could come in and do business with. Over the years, between the time that we came in and tried to do that, up until two thousand and fifteen, we came before the committee, I think, once, maybe twice, to get some plans approved, and one thing after another did not happen. That's kind of why I'm used to this. But, uh, the idea was that I had to build a building that was basically more than three thousand square feet. There wasn't any ordinances for some of the things that we wanted to do, which took us into two thousand and sixteen. In two thousand and sixteen, the city completely redid all of the ordinances for downtown. We wanted to put in a hotel on the lot across the street where the little chiropractor building was. We couldn't do that because we didn't have a hotel ordinance. We wanted to put in multifamily, and there's not a multifamily ordinance at that time. We did have, based on me, basically, the only reason why we have mixed use downtown is because I came to one of the meetings and actually asked the city manager at that time to please include mixed use, because I know that Victoria has a building and she has mixed use on her building, and several other people had mixed use on their buildings. So we got that done, but it did not change the fact that a few years later, while we were still making plans, we had COVID nineteen, and then now we're in the situation that we're in now. So it's really difficult to get things done by. Well, the plans I had for that lot was to put in a hotel, and then on the top of the hotel to put in a par, not apartments, but condominiums to help pay for the hotel. It's a standard way of making a hotel, it's a standard way of making condominiums.
I, I've seen those plans, by the way, they were, they were beautiful.
We got set back because we had to have off-street parking, I mean, on-street park, on-lot parking, on-site parking, I'm sorry. The on-site parking created a problem because we had too many units, so we had to go back to the drawing board. I am currently trying to get something done on that lot. That's why I'm trying to get it beautified so that we can actually figure out what needs to be done, what can be done with this new city council, and how we can get things done as far as improving that lot and actually doing some construction on it. And I can't guarantee that's going to happen, because one thing after another is going to lead, and right now, we're in a situation where no one wants to invest any money in anything. So I'm having a hard time convincing investors that we're not going to have a five or six or a ten-year period of time in which they aren't going to be able to do construction, because we don't have materials due to some things, and we don't have money due to inflation, and we don't have a lot of other reasons, so.
Yes.
It's, it's, it's an ongoing process.
And the point that I was trying to.
Seventeen years.
Well, where I was trying to get to, my understanding is of the acquisition of that lot itself, which was being used as an alley, came about ultimately because of a, I call it statute of limitations on the three eighty agreement, where due to non-performance, you were allowed to buy that lot at, basically, a percentage, and I'm talking about the specific language in the three eighty, I have read it, so. So that's how the acquisition actually came about, is that there was a clause in the three eighty agreement that allowed you to purchase it at, I think, ten percent of appraised value, fifty percent of appraised value?
No, it was like ten, fifteen percent.
Ten and fifteen percent.
Thousand dollars.
Right. Right, okay, and I'm just, I, I get a lot of questions about that, and that's where I wanted to give you an opportunity to explain that, and addition is the direction I think we're going to go, is asking the interim city manager to move forward with evaluating this and coming up with the solutions, that we do need to look at the three eighty agreement and how everything came about.
Yes. Motion to table it?
I make a motion that we table this.
Can we go ahead and direct the city, city manager to begin evaluation of the project and offer solutions? That's pretty broadly worded, but it certainly would put it on your desk.
Do we need a motion to table?
All right, technically, you can take no action, but it's preferred you do a motion for table, and then if you want to instruct the city manager to do something, do a second motion that does that.
Okay.
So two motions?
I will make a motion that we table the certificate, certificate of appropriateness to install a two to three-foot high split rail fence at one hundred Main, owner Sid Millsbaugh.
I'll second that motion.
A motion been made and second. Councilman Dunham?
No.
Councilman Meeks?
You said no? Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilman Washington?
Yes.
Councilman Jameson?
No.
Okay, so did you get that? Okay. So did you get that? All right. And then the second motion is. Make a.
Make a motion to, um, direct the city manager to look in to the fence and, um, everything that has to do with what we have heard here tonight, uh, about, um, hold on a minute, 100 Main Street.
And propose solutions.
And propose solutions.
I second that motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a amendment to that motion that we also include, um, before and after evidence of the improvements to 110 Main Street, uh, to understand if it was in similar condition before the modifications.
I don't understand what.
Did you get, did you get all that?
Yeah, we need to.
So we have a motion and then he had it. We've got a second amendment to the amendment. Second, somebody second the amendment.
We need to have this read back. Regret.
We can't say anything until it's either seconded or dies.
Yeah, second or we have to.
I don't know what we're voting on.
We're voting on.
Right now you're voting on his amendment.
Yes.
And you're, you're, you're waiting for a second on his amendment. If no one seconds it, it dies for lack of a second.
I'll second.
I'm sorry. Can we restate the amendment, please?
Okay. So we have a first.
He's just the amendment.
The amendment, I, I, I said, I have done amend to include before and after improvements at 100?
110.
110 Main?
Ms. Tolbert's property.
Okay, 110 Main.
Simply because of accusations that the roof is not in the same conditions prior.
Okay.
Now you vote on that amendment.
Voting on the amendment that she read back, Councilman Dunham.
Yes.
Councilman Meeks?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilman Washington?
Yes.
Councilman Jamison?
Yes.
Okay. So that amends the motion. And so now you vote on the full motion with the amendment.
And that was directing the.
City manager to.
To.
To look at 100 and propose.
Can we please restate that motion?
Direct city manager to look into the fence and everything we have heard here and propose solutions.
Which would include 110.
Which would include, okay. So there's the motion. Did I get a second?
Did you get a second?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Dunham?
Yes.
Councilman Meeks?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilman Washington?
Yes.
Councilman Jamison?
Yes.
I think we have direction and, um, our city manager will be contacting you. Okay?
Good.
And I have your phone number. Thank you.
And it'd be nice to get all this cleared up. Thank you, gentlemen and lady and lady. I appreciate it. It's nice to meet most of y'all tonight and all of, some of you I do know already. Um, and this is a good approach. I think this is very good approach to get this resolved.
Thank you. Jill, did you have something to say to this? Go ahead.
So, uh, I didn't know if you wanted to just have the, um, what the Historic Preservation Design Standards Committee decided on.
I'll just let you share that with, or do you want to do it next month? Share that with, is that okay?
Did you want it in the record, just that it was, you know, what they talked about, anything like that, just to have that as?
We tabled it, so it would go into.
I would think that I can have that conversation separately.
Thank you.
That's okay.
Excellent. We've done.
Motion to direct the city manager, conduct a comprehensive evaluation of the city's relationship with the Smithville Fire Department to determine whether the current structure remains the most appropriate and effective arrangement and if opportunities exist for improvement.
Mayor, um, I've been speaking, th, this came about, um, as we had budget discussions. And I think I personally and a lot of the members of the community were kind of blindsided by the fact that we were asking the fire department to contribute to utilities and rent for, because they are a nonprofit. And this started spiraling a bunch of questions such as, why are they not even a department of the city? Um, I understand a lot of volunteer fire departments will have a fundraising arm. And I thought that was a lot of the, the, um, the extent of our relationship, that it was a department with a fundraising arm. However, it's come to light that it is fully a nonprofit. Yet there's a departmental budget, yet there's answering to the city. We contribute significant funds to them and I don't want it to be misconstrued at all. I think that the fire department is well worthy of these contributions. But even speaking with, with council member, um, Washington, who's the assistant fire chief of the fire department, there's a lot of questions that I, I think are out there that we don't really know or understand. And, and I think at this juncture we are with the city, um, I've called around to some, some other cities and have some, some references that I can provide to Mr. Frazier. This is what we desire, but just simply questioning, is this the best relationship the city should have with the fire department? Uh, I understand that they, they service well past our, our city limits. Um, and even into Fayette County. But should there be a better relationship? Should there, are they fully protected as fired firefighters? And, you know, if, if tragedy struck one of them, would they be protected and is there benefits for them? And I'm not in a position and we don't have the, the financial funding for a suggestion of paying the firefighters at this time. But is this the best relationship the city should have with our fire department?
I certainly appreciate you bringing this to our attention and for the purposes of, um, discussion, since the motion is contained in the agenda item, I will second that motion.
A motion been made and second, Councilman Dunham.
Uh, we may want more discussion.
To give him direction to bring some information back to the table? Discussion?
Are there any questions or additional things we want to?
I do have one question. Cynthia, can you tell me how the line item for the fire department, how it evolved into what it is? What we have the line item, is that for the callouts for the, for the $15 that the city contributes to that? Or whatever it was that we, that is on the utility bills, the line item within our budget for the fire department? Mm-hmm. What's it, w, w, why we have that line item?
It, that's just the way it's always, I mean, since I've been here, that's the way it's always been. And we issue the checks to them. It used to be that the city actually issued a check to every fire department. I mean, every person that was in the fire department. And several years back now, we write one check to the fire department and then the fire department distributes those fire runs based on, on their stuff. We do one check. Years ago, when it first started, it was that way. Like I said, as far as I know, we've always done that, you know?
Council, may I just weigh in a second?
Mm-hmm.
What you're talking about has a lot of legal issues that's associated with it. The, I've dealt with several cities that have this exact same scenario and relationships with their volunteer fire departments. And there's a lot of legal issues that get tied in because there are several statutes that apply directly to volunteer fire departments. And so I, I want to talk to the city manager about exactly all of those things. If he's been, going to be instructed to, to bring something back to you. But I will just caution that it's, it gets very complicated when you start delving into it.
And I, and it very well may be that this is the best relationship that we should have. And I am not suggesting that it has to change. It is more just an evaluation of what's here, understanding our liability, understanding according to the state constitution as well, because of the nonprofit thing that we're discovering. I mean, like tax notes, the 2023 tax note originally had a line item for a fire truck in there. So how are we rationalizing that spend? Not saying we shouldn't rationalize a spend, but how are we rationalizing it? How are we making sure that we're not in violation of the constitution for stuff like that? And.
We probably need to save that discussion and go ahead and move forward. I call the vote.
I think I had a motion and a second, correct?
Well, unless there's other discussion, I'm calling, I'm asking you to call the vote.
Councilman Dunham?
Yes.
Councilman Meeks?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilman Washington?
Yes.
Councilman Jamison?
Yes.
Okay. You have direction? Okay. Discussion and action on result, uh, resolution, casting votes for the Board of Directors of the Bastrop Central Appraisal District. So remember last year we had nominations for BCAD Board of Directors are due and the city of Smithville has 62 votes to cast out of a total of 5,000 votes. And our nominations are Justin Besner and David Reed. And we're asking, do we want to cast 31 votes for each Smithville nominee?
Historically, there's been casting most of it for one to kind of make sure that we had standing on there. But last year we, we deviated from that and went, I don't know if it was 50/50 or what it was, but we did a deviation. It was.
It was 50/50.
Was it 50/50?
It was 50/50.
Okay. So it, it, you know, whatever council wants to do, however y'all think we need to, I guess we'll have to figure that one out. I personally am for 50/50.
If you were to move that, I would second it.
That seems as good a way to do it as.
Yeah. I make a motion, uh, casting on, on a resolution, casting votes for the Board of Directors of the Bastrop Central Appraisals District to split the vote between our two candidates.
I second.
Any other discussion? Councilman Dunham?
Yes.
Councilman Meeks?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilman Washington?
Yes.
Councilman Jamison?
Yes.
Approved. Discussion and action on a 2025 certified tax levy for the city of Smithville.
Please ma'am.
Step on up.
Um, basically this is just, uh, the report that we received from L and Owens. Once they get everything finalized, these are the numbers that the tax statements are going to go out on. And it's just something I have to present to you to show that we did present it. And it's the final certified numbers, basically is all it is.
Okay. Give me a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the 2025 certified tax levy for the city of Smithville.
I second.
A motion been made and second, Councilman Dunham?
Yes.
Councilman Meeks?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilman Washington?
Yes.
Councilman Jamison?
Yes.
Yay, approved. Discussion and action on the 1.75% budget cuts for all departments.
Uh, this was a topic that we had previously discussed. Um, it was a request that existed prior to my tenure, but there was a little confusion as to how it applied, whether it was across all departments, whether it was across just the general fund. Um, we did, um, have some further discussions about it. And my understanding is that it was determined that the initial request was meant to be for the general fund only. And I think that the point of this, um, discussion here is just to clarify what was intended at that time.
I think there is also an intention behind this to discuss the progress towards meeting these cuts as well, too. I don't know if that is appropriate for discussion here or an executive session, but leave it up to council and the mayor.
Well, I thought we were real clear with the direction was, uh, for each department to come back and tell us how they could reduce the 1.75% by a department in terms of the general fund expenditures. I'm pretty sure we were real clear on that direction.
That was my understanding.
And we did have discussions of this and each department has been given a, what's the yellow? What's the original terminology?
Yellow.
Yes. Um, and so that's still actually be in progress. That is a very difficult, um, process for them to go through and they are still working on that. So we're still in discussions on that. So I apologize to the council that I don't have.
So you need more time?
Absolutely.
Would we like to postpone this till the December meeting?
Postpone it till December.
Uh, one word of caution on that is it was supposed to be approved. The, the amended budget was directed to be approved in the December budget, uh, December meeting.
That is correct. And can I just make a comment? Um, I know you said the general fund only, but that will, um, not include the utility fund, which is a significant amount of money. I'm just saying, if you wanted a one point, I'm, just for clarification, if it's just a general, then that's, that's fine.
I believe that we said 1.75% based on the general fund because that was going to achieve the 100 and approximate $120,000 we were needing as a result of the transition from the city manager's retirement.
That'll be very, uh, helpful for a lot of departments.
Yeah. I think if we go back and look at that.
And I, I.
I think it was Brandon's motion, so.
So are we suggesting that we just start to determine a new percentage that is lower to distribute the 120,000 across utility and general fund? Is that the concern?
The goal was 120. We just use 1.75 as the number. And I think it would be up to this interim city manager's evaluation of the recommendations by department as to whether we had, if he comes up with more cuts than that, then of course it would give us options. But the goal was to get 120. I'm, I'm speaking, I'm, Brandon, it was your motion, so I'm depending on you.
No, that, that is, and, and I am willing to make a motion to change the original direction. Mayor, make a motion that we adjust the percent of budget cuts to reflect a total of $120,000 of budget cuts evenly distributed across all departments, including the general and utility fund.
Are you good with that?
I thought that's what we did prior.
It's similar, the, where I guess we can't discuss till there's a second.
Second.
There, it's, it's very similar motion. I don't know what the number is, but it's not going to be 1.75% anymore. It's going to be a lower percentage. Cause I think 1.75 came out to like 280,000. So it's lowering the percentage. That's why I'm saying evenly distributed. So it's still an even burden across all departments. But lowering it to the total cut is 120.
Correct. Um, when we looked at the 1.75 and just doing the, the cost across all departments, it did come up to about 285,000, give or take. And then, but there was also an additional statement saying equal to 120. So when we did 1.75 across just the general fund only, it matched the 120. So that made me, that gave me the impression that it was intended to be just of the general fund. And that's, that was the clarification that I needed.
Cynthia, do you have a calculator?
Okay.
Do you, do you know? Do you know what the, the budget number is for 20, the current fiscal year? For, uh, both utility and general? Let me just do the math real quick.
Just the, uh, I guess a clarification comment. When you're dealing with percentages, the larger the number, the more the percentages happen. Your motion technically caps it saying, I, we need 120, come up with 120, right? And, and that, that you don't have to deal with percentages.
Well, and the intent is that it's evenly distributed across.
Yeah.
Departments.
Yeah. 120 spread out over the, under all the departments. However, you get to 120, just get us 120 evenly distributed.
Yeah, evenly distributed. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So you want to redo your motion?
No, he.
Take my motion.
No, that is his motion. That is his motion.
That.
Yeah.
May I ask the interim city manager a question there because we want to make sure that we've given you real clear direction there. I don't know how, I mean, you evenly distributed, if you've gone through the exercise with your department heads, I'm sure it may have been revealing about what opportunities they did have to save money. Uh, I know that there's a couple of things that you had discovered that may have, uh, been able to cover the full 120 without going across the board. But, uh, so what we're, the direction we're giving is, is to distribute it evenly, even though he may have found 120 or more in one department. Correct?
And I think we're, there is already one particular department, not getting as good specific because I don't know if it's allowed or not, but there's already one particular department that has made a very significant sacrifice. And I don't want them.
Agreed.
Be penalized for making that sacrifice.
So we could leave that to the discretion of, uh, the city manager.
So what we could, uh, do with that is tell him to find the 120, uh, that across the board, but it would not, it did not have to be spread evenly. He, he would get it where he could find it. Let his discretion to do it.
We would have to amend the motion for it to be that way. We would have to amend the motion for it to be that way.
I will, I will amend the motion that the city manager has the discretion across all city departments on how much he gets from each city department.
I second that.
Motion been made in second. Uh, Councilman Dunham?
No.
Councilman Meeks?
No.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilman Washington?
Yes.
Councilman Jameson?
No, I think we need to give this another shot.
Okay, go for it.
So uh.
That was the amendment. So now you have the original motion still.
You have the original motion. We can just go with that.
Technically, he's making a recommendation. When you come to a budget amendment, that's completely a council's discretion. He can make different recommendations. He can tell you all the different things that are going on. He'll follow his instructions, but that doesn't mean he can't give you other things you can look at. Ultimately, when you're talking about a budget amendment, that is all city council.
Agreed.
We have the motion.
Can we repeat the motion?
Adjust the total, let me see, there's been quite a bit. General fund only would come up with a hundred and twenty adjustment to total a hundred and twenty K evenly distributed across all departments, even utilities.
Call vote.
Call vote. Uh, Councilman Dunham?
Yes.
Meeks?
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilman Washington?
Yes.
Councilman Jameson?
Yes.
And just to point a clarity on that, we did not modify the due date on that.
No.
Okay, are you good?
I understand that, you know, we're going to approve the, the amendment in the next meeting. Would it be prudent to maybe have a special session that we, in between now and then, that we could discuss and resolve this?
I think it just has to be approved in December. It was what the original, it wasn't by any certain date in December.
You can call an executive before then. If that's what makes you more comfortable, I certainly would support that.
Okay, so we're good with that one?
But we want to go ahead and make that motion to set that, to schedule that executive session now?
No, special session, sir.
Special session?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, special called meeting.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, special called meeting.
Finish going through here because we have holidays and everything going up. So if we can sit down with our calendars, let's finish the agenda and we go, okay?
My, I, I just, one, one question about it all. If Jeremy um, goes and he gets this over the time, we can bring his, his cuts right up first. We can approve them or whatever and then we can approve them, the uh, the, the, the cuts in the December meeting without having a special session. If we still want to wrangle with them in December, then we can make, we can save a date or whatever. We can all look at that and do it. We don't have to establish that meeting yet. We just know that we, we have the room to do it.
That's fine. I'm just want to meet the needs of the interim city manager now to make sure that he has the ability to have access to us in open form.
And to the city attorney's point, city manager can provide other alternatives and that may require uh, another meeting. But if you are able to find exactly what was requested, then we, very much to Councilman Jenkins' point, we can just do it in that meeting.
Discussion and action on the leaf and limb services.
Good evening. Good evening, council, neighbors. Uh, thank you for your time. I want to start with this simple picture of how this works and actually happens. Uh, we have four employees, two dedicated for living, uh, limb pickup and two leaf collections, running two trucks from seven-thirty AM to four-thirty PM, Monday through Friday, no overtime, of course. It's a small crew doing a big job, block by block, keeping the city moving. And a brief note, even though that um, like a pumpkin at midnight, um, my position will expire soon due to budget cuts. I wanted to honor my commitment to our residents and bring forward what I've gathered here uh, as your city liaison from both the community and the staff. That's uh, why I'm here to make sure that our voices and crews, our reality are clear on the record and that's why the sense of duty that y'all spoke about veterans that I have. Here's the bottom line upfront. Uh, please keep the citywide route with the ten dollar flat monthly charge. It is the fastest, fairest, safest way to serve our whole community. Why routes? Because predictability is a service. When residents know the rhythm, piles don't linger, sidelines stay open and emergency vehicles have room to maneuver. Crews keep rolling instead of crisscrossing town for one uh, for one-off tickets. And we all love our beautiful trees, those sparkles of greens that cast shades on our porches and cool streets, frames uh, our neighborhoods. We like everything, like everything worth having, they ask for care. We have a lot of trees and Leaf and Limb program is how we keep that beauty from becoming a burden to our blocks. Our front counter utilities coworkers can tell you what it looks like behind the scenes. Every work order runs through the C Click Fix. Uh, if residents can use it, uh, city hall staff enters the ticket. Year to date, we have two hundred and sixty-six live and limb tickets. A hundred and ninety-one of those, about a seventy-one percent were created by staff for residents that don't know how to use the technology and our staff is willing to go above and beyond for that. And if every pickup turns into a pay per ticket request, the administrative load balloons and the feel of work slows. And we see the consequences right away in our alleys. When debris block an alley, the trash truck can't get through. That becomes misservice, sanitation concerns and understandable frustrations for the customers who did not, nothing wrong other than put their pile of leaves and limb where they always do. There's another gap. Our crews quietly bridge. Waste management only picks up limbs once a month on a bulk with strict size, weight and bundling rules. In practice, bundles are rarely correct or not bundle at all. So pickups get rejected and delayed. Our route services fills that gap with week in a week out. Before I close, uh, a quick cost contrast, what on demand really means at the curve. Nearby cities, that city charged by the uh, cubic yard illustrates the math. A common four-yard pile can easily mean four dollars per event and two cleanups in a season becomes eighty dollars for a single household, more if volume spikes. These models shift costs and risk the residents, especially after storms. While adding ticketing and verifying steps that slow the cruise, our ten dollar flat fee monthly keeps costs predictable and and low for households. It keeps crews collecting instead of clerking. I know on-demand pay per pickup can sound flexible. In practice, it raises the cost for residents, pushes towards additional routes and personnel just to handle call volume and interrupts in workflows as crews stop collecting to verify tickets and payments. Then add a storm, on-demand becomes a slow demand exactly when safety matters the most because piles surge citywide at the same time. If we get multiple storms events in a single month, which we've seen before multiple times, families could face multiple separate charges just to keep up, which ma- many simply can't afford. And that's something they voiced multiple times. Meanwhile, crews are pulled off steady routes or routes to sort payments and tickets. Alley stay blocked longer and emergency access and sanitation suffer right when we need speed, clarity and fairness to the most. The community has already weighed in in fall twenty twenty-four resident survey. Three hundred and seventy-six people resident, uh, three hundred and seventy-six residents told us they can't pay more and they want and need this service. That's why the ten dollar flat fee matters. It keeps the program affordable for household and lets the city keep a steady citywide cadence. We'll look at peers, large and small, the successful theme is clear, simplicity and predictability. Cities bundle the costs sensibly and push routes or calendars. Residents know what to expect. Crews spend time collecting and not clerking. As part of the recommendation, we conducted a comparative, uh, comparative review of numerous cities, uh, including Austin, San Antonio, Dallas, Durham, Durham, Algen, Bastrop and Lockhart. And convened the full internal team, department heads and the frontline staff across the general utilities be, uh, billing, public works and code enforcement, along with the leaf and limb crews and the C Click, uh, Click Fix operators to document experiences, workloads, impact, safety concerns and billing communication challenges. So our request is straightforward. Keep the designated route model, keep the ten dollar monthly fee charged for the customers and this decision protects affordability for families and seniors, efficiency for a small crew, safety in our streets and alleys and storm readiness when we need speed more than anything. Thank you for supporting the program and keep Smithville clean.
I think I'd like to make a comment about, um, this is more than just the picking up the leaf and limb from the alley. Um, we have a brush dump that is located on the hill that um, caught on fire a year and a half ago and threatened to turn into a major wildland fire. Previous city council at that time was, and the city manager at the time uh, was forced to act and to start spending a very significant amount of money, which was diverted from the fire truck that I mentioned earlier to start doing tub grinding, uh, to prevent a major fire. We spent more than a hundred thousand dollars in the last fiscal year. We have currently budgeted at least fifty thousand dollars just for grinding mulch in our brush dump. It is a very large cost that is being spread to our residents. Every one of us, whether we use the leaf or limb service or not, is having to pay not just the ten dollars on the, on the utility bill, but also paying for the leaf, I mean, for the tub grinding, which is very expensive. Texas A and M Forest Service got. I'll be careful with my, my comments here, but they're, they're not very pleased with the brush dump. And they, they do, are worried about it, um, and, and it's rest of the community. Um, and if we had had different One Direction, there's probably some houses on the hill that would not be here today. So we need to make sure we're taking all of that into account.
Given that, I'm not willing to take any action on this right now.
So the city just remains picking up the limbs like we have been doing? Is that what you're, or just table this or what are you?
Well, in effect, I mean, I'm saying that we're pushing for any action, but if we need to get the public works director to come up and explain exactly what we're doing right now, so the public understands.
I believe we have a deadline that we're transitioning away from the ten dollar that was voted on by council.
We're trying to say.
Uh, yeah, that's the whole purpose of Jose coming up here to, to do this presentation day is because we do have a deadline. December first is the day we're supposed to go on demand or whatever. Kind of brought to our eyes really good this time, a couple of weeks ago when we had that big storm. We had a lot, a lot of trees go down, a lot of limbs and I've had phone call after phone call and ask, is the city going to come and rake up the city's leaves in their yard? So that they don't have to pay to have it moved off? What do we do about the city tree that the limb fell into the road? You know, do they drag it to the alley and do they get charged for it? Do they have to pay for it when it's on demand? What's going to happen in storm, in storm days? That's what we're asking. Uh, same thing, like I said, just even on normal days, the people that are trying to keep, you know, Smithfield beautiful and rake their leaves just regular during the, the time. Are they going to rake the city's leaves and put them in the alley and, and pay for it or to, you know, how's that going to happen? So, uh, I don't want to talk negative to anything, but maybe when we started this and talked about it to, you know, just figure out, raise revenue, make, make some money, whatever. Maybe we didn't look into this real well. Maybe at that time it wasn't what was going on and stuff. So as of today, right now, my two crews, uh, my leaf crew and my limb crew, they run a route. They stay on the route all day and they go through every alley, every place that has limbs or leaves to be picked up and they pick them up and they try to chip up every limb they can or whatever and stuff. But if we get too big a logs that can't go in our machine, I have to get a backhoe and a truck to come by, pick it up, take it to the brush dump and that's why the brush dump is so out of whack. When we tub grind out at the brush dump, we're not tub grinding mulch. We're tub grinding all the brush that's left over that we couldn't throw through our machines or whatever and stuff like that. So and then uh, we work with Austin Wood to help try to remove some of the chips and stuff and everything. They make us a really, I mean, they make us a good deal trying to get it out of there or whatever, but it does. It's cost money. Everything costs money to get done. So I'm kind of like what Jose said, a, a lot of the people that I've talked to throughout the city or whatever, they're used to, you know, using, they know the system, they know what day they're supposed to be picked up, they know when to put their limbs out, they know how to put their leaves out, they know how to separate them and they're ready to be picked up. So that's what we're going with right now. Again, we do have a deadline by December first, so we got to make this decision. So any questions? Let's get after it.
Okay, well, I don't, I guess somebody, restate the ask and then we need to look at the implications that it has, the impact it has on the budget and the reasons that we did this in the first place.
So to.
What's the ask?
The restate the ask is to keep it as is, as we're doing right now. Uh, charge everybody ten dollars a month on their utility bill and we will run the same routes as we do and we will pick up for everybody. Leaf and limb.
So there's some. I think today, I don't know that our interim city manager may have enough information to really understand because we may need to revisit a motion we made earlier to be able to cover the, the difference. But essentially, what we had done is we had removed a ten dollar service fee off the utility bill. I believe the last meeting, it was voted on by this council to temporarily reinstate it until through the end of November. Uh, but that fee was then being covered by the on-demand service that would generate more revenue. And it would actually only put the burden on the people using it. And I want to say it was somewhere around fifty, sixty thousand dollars additional revenue on top of the ten dollar fee. The ten dollar fee went away. So yeah, it was, yeah.
I think the math, putting the ten dollar fee back on and then what Robert had calculated, I feel I feel we need to put the ten dollars back on. The people are used to it and we have a lot of trees. People are really complaining about it going away. A lot of people are complaining.
And I do know that, you know, we can make an estimate about how many we think are going to use it under the, the on-demand and everything else. But you also have to take into effect, and this is what I take in. The people that use it most are people that can't afford a hundred and fifty dollars for however many yards it is that they're, they're going to have to pick up. So they're never going to use it. So debris is going to be in the alleys and things like that. They're going to push it out in the street or whatever. I just don't think it's going to make. I, I think it's going to be a bigger problem to go on demand than it is to keep it as the ten dollars.
Does the cost of the leaf and limb, whenever you're looking at how much it costs you to provide that service to the city, does it include the tub grinding?
No, no.
I think a decision, if we're not going to go for, if we're going to put this back on the utility bill, I think it needs to cover that because if we're not covering that expense.
We, we still have to do the, the tub grinding regardless of whether leaf or limb happens or not. The city's still picking up limbs and everything else, debris that happens from storms and other things. We're doing tub grinding no matter what and we're still, we're still doing that. We're still going to have to continue to do that.
From what I understand, that was being expensed into the, the fees that were presented during the budget process.
I didn't understand it that way. Tub grinding has pretty much always kind of, oh, oh, we need to do it and it's going to be this much more. And we usually either take it out of tax note or we have extra, we have found money from somewhere else to cover it. The one time that we really had the big expense was after the fire and that was because if you had gone out there at the time and I did.
if you would've gone out there at the time, and I did, the, the, it was horrible, the whole dump was overgrown, everything was there, it has been hauled away, the dump looks a lot better, and, uh, y'all have maintained it and done just exactly what the forestry department wanted them to do.
Yeah, that's where I, I didn't understand where the Texas A and M forestry came in, because we've, we've done a lot of work out there, and we've got everything separated, piled and stuff, so we know what's about to be tub grinded and what's not, you know, and stuff, what can't be hauled off at the time. And by closing it to the public and just having, you know, us pick up through the city, we don't have the extra contractors coming through that don't work here in the city, they work out of the city, but they bring their brush, because we used to have it open at the brush dump full times, so we had 10 times the amount of brush that was out there that we have now today. It does, it, it is, I, it's beautiful out there. If you would've seen it, you know, three years ago when it was on fire and everything and the way it was out, you know, we plated it, cleaned it, we've leveled it, we've poured dirt over everything and stuff, and everything is situated and separated now.
We're trying to find a solution to this issue, though. I think what we're facing is that we imposed a deadline of December first. If we simply extend that deadline until we get more information, then, because we don't know the impact that this decision is gonna have on the budget, which is one of the reasons we did it in the first place. We extended to December first. To me, we extend now to the December council meetings, so we have time to get more feedback for it, understanding the implications of the new decision that we make, if that makes sense.
I guess my question would be, what kind of feedback are you looking for?
Well, we would let the interim city manager work with you guys and come back with a proposed solution, in my opinion.
And, and I'm, I'm okay with extending it, I would like to extend it to, uh, the end of December, it gives Jeremy all the time he needs to find everything. We've already put so many asks on him, I believe we need to go till the first of the year.
So how about the January meeting?
Yeah, that will work for me.
Edward.
Bring it back at the January meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, after with Jeremy, get, yeah.
Can, can you please, uh, just talk a minute about, like, this last storm, use it as an example, how much additional monies did it take to do that storm cleanup on the part of the city? And where is that, uh, where's that, where's that, what's that tied to in the budget if it's an extra, uh, an emergency situation?
So with, when the storm came, you know, the first week after the storm was over, I actually pulled multiple crews, so manpower, trucks, fuel, trailers, we were hauling brush, everybody, everybody was hauling it, not just my two crews, they couldn't, there's no way they could ever kept up with it all. Uh, we actually took the leaf machine off of the leaf truck and took the door off and put an extra chipper on there so that we had two chippers running the whole time. We have just now, as of last Friday, completed the, all the storm restoration from all the leaves and the limbs and stuff from two and a half weeks ago. So it, it took us a lot, we didn't know overtime, we just kept it as we went or whatever and stuff, but there was a lot of hauling for the very first week with a lot of crews, everybody, everybody was out there.
And, um, many were working overtime but not being paid for.
So, yeah, when, when the storm came, uh, I know, I can talk for my electric crew, you know, they got called out about 11 o'clock that night at the storm, and they worked all through the night, through the day, till the next day at 7:30 that night is when they finally had everybody on. Uh, they all split, went back home to get some rest, hour later, there was some stragglers of power on and stuff and trees, so that we had a couple guys go back out and work three or four more hours. So there was a lot of time spent out there, you know, getting trees and stuff off the power lines, uh, getting them to the side where they could access the alleys to get power back on and stuff and this and that, and it caused a lot of damage. The trees, the trees were the nuisance of the whole storm, really.
Was the question that, whether they got paid?
Well, he's saying they got paid but not overtime.
Well, no, they did, now, when they were working through the night, yes, they got paid overtime and stuff, but since, when I'm talking about like the storm is over, we have all the power restored and everything and stuff, we stop, push everything to the side, we come back Monday morning, we sit down, we make a game plan, and Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 4:30, we're picking brush up.
So what's a storm like that cost the city generally?
I, I, that I couldn't answer to you right now, but I, it's pretty, I mean, like I said, it's a lot of fuel, a lot of trucks moving, a lot of manpower going, you know.
Could you come back with like an estimate on that when we, if we move this to the January meeting?
Yeah.
I don't think we have to table, we have to move to extend that deadline.
Extend the deadline. I think, uh, another question that I have is, I know some cities have moved to a quarterly, route, so they just kind of do it all, like, say, a week, week and a half, once a quarter. Do you feel that that could be a viable solution as well, too?
To actually just like, once a quarter, go and do leaf and limb?
Yeah.
No. The, the way the, the, the leaves and limb go out right now.
Is of, that is what a lot of cities do.
Yeah.
I'd like to see a track over the past two, however long we've had click fix, leaf and limb, how many happened over the year, how many get in there and, and everything? Let's see how many, or how, how that tracks over the last two or three years.
And I remember a few council meetings ago or whatever, because we did this, and we ran for like three months, and we made a tally of every pile of limbs we picked up, every pile of leaves we picked up, and then, you know, we averaged it to the deal, I, I don't remember the number off my head, I'm sorry, but we, I'd have to go like it back, but, I mean, they're, they're pulling, you know, a hundred pickups a day. Now, some of them are bigger than others, yes, give or take or whatever, you know, but their, their job is, they know, is to pretty much spend 15 minutes, you know, per stop, you know, to be picking up leaves and limbs or whatever and stuff, so, uh, you kinda average that out. Like I said, there's, it's about a hundred stops a day. Uh, of course, there's different seasons, you know, and stuff too, limbs slow down in the season and leaves start falling in the fall, you know, and stuff, but then vice versa, it changes around, you know, everything starts growing back, no more leaves falling, but we got limbs everywhere and stuff, so, uh, it's just, it's just a process that we go through every year.
Thank you, I think we know which way we're gonna go. Uh, I make a motion that we extend the, uh, leaf and limb and to the January, uh, city council meeting, and that we, in, in this same motion, we direct Jeremy to, uh, get all the information about what we would need, how much it's gonna cost, do we incorporate into the brush dump, the grinding, uh, a, a, a path forward for us.
The motion is, is to extend implementation of the leaf and limb service program?
A second.
I second that motion.
I have a question on implementation of that, the way it's worded, for billing purposes, it may, if we're making a decision in January, it may have to extend all the way to the end of January.
I think, I think that, uh, the, a, a, after, after the meeting, they could, they could prorate it for the month, so they could just prorate however it was gonna be.
Can we do that?
Where is Cynthia?
Can we prorate?
Cynthia wants January 31st.
That look was not good.
You could bring that back in your, you could bring that back in your recommendation to us in January, couldn't you, the solution?
Well, we have to know when to tell, like, say this fails, we have to know when to tell her to go to the policy.
I, I would think that you would want it at the beginning of whatever the bill cycle is.
Right, yeah, you would want it at the beginning of a bill cycle. Like I said, it would be very hard to prorate, because the way our system is set up, you put a set rate in, it's 10 bucks a month, and that's the way it's.
Okay, usually, I, I don't know about anybody else's, I think the eighth is where I see.
It's gonna say Jennifer, I think it's the eighth, it is our billing start, when it starts.
Bill is usually right.
I guess what I was trying to say, like, all bills that are issued after January 31st is where my attention was on that.
You wanna, you'll make amendment?
I think it'd be easier for you to withdraw.
Bill a month behind, so really, when you bill in January, you're billing for December, so it could potentially be, if you make it effective.
So we could actually just stop it then after.
Yeah.
If we, if y'all approve, or however we decide to go in January, you could actually do whatever, we could just stop the payment right then and there, and it wouldn't be billed for, because the money wouldn't go on the bill until February.
The way the motion is currently worded, are y'all worried about it? About implementing it?
I am, I think we'll withdraw and try it again.
I'll be glad to withdraw my motion, and I'll let you make the motion, sir.
I think Mr. Brandon down there has it.
Come on, Brandon.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we extend the implementation, or delay the implementation of on-demand leaf and limb service until January, February 1st, and direct the city manager to understand the full cost and burden associated with servicing leaf and limb.
January meeting?
Through recommendations.
I restate that.
Jennifer has it.
I'll make a second.
Motion been made in second, Councilman Dunham.
Yes.
Councilman Meeks.
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins.
Yes.
Councilman Washington.
Yes.
Councilman Jameson.
Yes.
Oh, that leads us to Cynthia. Discussion is on approval of the financial report. Come on up, girl.
Okay, uh, you had in your council packet the, uh, Jan, October, uh.
January on January?
It's been a long day. The first month of the new budget year, October, not January, October. Like I said, it's first month of the year, not a lot going on, we pay a lot of bills upfront, and if you looked at the report, we've paid a lot of the tax note debt upfront, some of those things, so some of your stuff may look a little, you know, one-sided expenses may be higher, but like I said, that's just because it's in the first month of the year, and your revenue is collected throughout the year. So I don't know if y'all have any specific questions on it, I didn't, I mean, overall, we're pretty much where we're supposed to be, you know, eight point. Overall, eight percent.
I make a motion that we approve the financial report.
I'll second it.
Motion been made in second. Councilman Dunham.
Yes.
Councilman Meeks.
Yes.
Councilman Jenkins.
Yes.
Councilman Washington.
Yes.
Councilman Jameson.
Yes.
Yes, approved, and then we go. We're going into closed session, the city council will hold an executive session pursuant to Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 Government Code, in accordance with the authority contained in Section 551074, to discuss the position of intern city manager and set smart goals. I have 807. I have eight oh seven.
Thank you.
To order, I lost my glasses. Discussion and action is result of the executive session, no action taken, meeting is adjourned. Oh, and the time is nine twenty seven, and the meeting is still adjourned.